Welcome to the Tuesday, November 26th Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in closed sessions since 6:00 PM this evening to discuss a student discipline case, employment of employee, property acquisition, lease or purchase, and the approval of the October 22nd, 2013, and the November 12th, 2013 closed session minutes. We have seven Board members present, none absent. Could you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And now for the best part of any school board meeting, that is the recognition of achievement of our students in the district. So, the College Board Advanced Placement National Scholars.
Yes, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce Diana Smith, Principal at York High School, which will do the honors in naming our students who have been recognized by the College Board as Advanced Placement National Scholars. I should also say, as Diana's coming up, that for the fourth year in a row, York was honored as one of the most outstanding AP high schools in the country. They have not only increased the number of students who are taking AP classes, but continue to increase their scores at the same time. It's remarkable accomplishment. So with that, Diana?
Good evening. And I'd like to ask our students who are here tonight to come up, and for the students that could not be here, but their parents are here, we thought it would be nice and appropriate if we asked the parents to come up and represent them as well. So if students and parents, if you would all come up. Thank you so much. And to the members of Board and to the community, we appreciate the opportunity to recognize our national AP Scholars tonight, and also our first state AP Scholar. We talk a lot about AP and the benefits of college-level coursework. We believe in the importance of introducing students to rigorous college coursework at the high school to help them prepare. And of course, the research tells us that students that take and are successful in AP are successful in college and graduate, have a higher graduation rate in college, get more scholarships. I hope that bore out. We know it saves your parents money when you have advanced placement as well. In fact, coming up here in a couple of weeks, we're going to have our first AP forum at York to introduce our freshmen and sophomores and juniors to AP courses as well, because we believe in the importance. Tonight is a culminating event for, not just for the students or for York, but for the entire district, for our parents as well, for the community, to be able to see these outstanding students and to really sort of wrap our head around the things that they've been able to accomplish through their AP tests. The College Board designates as AP Scholars those students who, based on the number of tests they take and the scores they receive, earn different designations. And we actually had 268 Scholars this year, which is over two times the number that we had just five years ago. But the 17 students that are listed on your program, some of whom that you see here tonight, represent sort of the extraordinary group within the Scholars. We celebrate the 17 National AP Scholars awarded to those students who receive an average of at least four on all of their exams, and a score of four or higher on eight or more exams. And so it's just extraordinary to think about what you've accomplished. And I'm going to read the names of each of the students, and if you would just wave, if you're here, and parents, if you'd wave as well. I think it's interesting to note that in the list, it represents so many of our schools in the district, elementary and middle, public and private as well. I love that we have a mix of, a pretty even mix of males and females that are on the list this year, and truly a testament to your hard work, students, to supportive parents, a great community that supports AP coursework as well. And we just appreciate everything that you've done. One of the things that the students told me that I thought you might be interested in, and I know we have a number of teachers that are here tonight, is that when the students think about the people that inspired them along the way, of course, their parents, but also they look toward teachers all the way through, from elementary through middle school and high school. And so we heard some wonderful names. Students talk about teachers like Ms. Smith Jantsch, Mrs. Deitchen, Mrs. Marchanetti at IC. I hope I got that right, Spencer. Okay, Marchinsky, not close. They also talked about high school teachers like Mr. Anderson and Ms. Van Hook and others that inspired them. And I just think it's a testament to the education all the way along the way. Students get inspiration all the way back into kindergarten and first grade and all the way through. So we appreciate hearing that as well. So congratulations to our National Scholars, and tonight that includes Karen Altergut. And again, if you'd wave if you're here, Ellen Berry, Andrew Douglas, Evan Fabry, Maureen Feeny, Jenna Honeywell, Graham Johnson, Joseph Kleinhans, Laura Krantz, Justin McDonough, David McKay, Ushishinaha, Thomas Reivers, Gabby Reek, Kaylee Slavik, Spencer Wegner, and Matthew Wilber. Congratulations. I think they're going to actually hand you something.
Don't go anywhere yet. Don't go anywhere yet. So my, I had a couple of comments beforehand, which would be completely repetitious from what you've heard, but a few years ago, we challenged the high school, the Board challenged the high school administration to increase enrollment in AP courses, with the idea being that if we could encourage every student at York to take at least one AP class before they graduated, it would give them tremendous experience in the rigor of a college-level course within, within the confines and the support structure that York High School offers them that a university may not. And just to get a sample of, of the rigor that will be involved in college, because they graduate from high school, and the following semester there, by definition, they're taking five AP classes. So the high school administration not only did that, and the expectation was that the average score would fall. The high school not only did that, but for the next four years consistently made the AP Scholar List. And astonishingly, at the same time, the average scores on our AP tests went up. I think that is a remarkable accomplishment, and thank you. So with that said, I have a proclamation to read. And, you know, kids, kids that take AP classes, by definition, are the overachievers. The people standing before you here tonight and their children that aren't here, represented by their parents, there must be some new word that hasn't been come up, the overachievers of the overachievers, because these kids have done some phenomenal work. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas the College Board's Advanced Placement Program provides willing and academically-prepared students the opportunity to take rigorous college-level courses while still in high school, and to earn college-level credit, advanced placement, or both, for successful performance on the AP exams. And whereas recognition was awarded to 17 York Community High School students in the National Advanced Placement Scholar category, which is granted to students who receive an average score of at least four out of five on all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of those exams. Whereas, one senior from the class of 2014 and 16, 2013 York graduates, earned the prestigious distinction of receiving a top score of five on multiple AP exams as follows. Karen Altergut, 10 AP -- I just need to take a step back. The idea of taking 10 or more AP exams is incredible, but, sorry, let me continue. Karen Altergut, 10 AP exams with a top score on eight of them. Ellen Berry, 10 AP exams with a top score on eight. Andrew Douglas, class of 2014, eight AP exams with a top score on seven. Evan Fabry, 11 AP exams with a top score on nine. Maureen Feeny, nine AP exams with a top score on three. Jenna Honeywell, nine AP exams with a top score on seven. Graham Johnson, eight AP exams with a top score on seven. Joseph Kleinhans, 10 AP exams with a top score on nine of the 10. Laura Krantz, eight AP exams with a top score on seven. Justin McDonough, 12 AP exams with a top score on eight. David McKay, 10 AP exams with a top score on six. Thomas Reivers, 11 AP exams with a top score on four. Gabriella Reek, 10 AP exams with a top score on five. Kaylee Slavik, eight AP exams with a top score on seven. Spencer Wegner, 12 AP exams with a top score on seven. And Matthew Wilber, nine AP exams with a top score on seven. And whereas, the designation of State AP Scholar is granted to one male and one female in each US state by earning scores of three or higher on the greatest number of AP exams, and then earning an average score of at least three and a half on all AP exams taken. And whereas, the class of 2013 graduate, graduate Ushishinaha, was recently named both an Advanced Placement Scholar and a State AP Scholar, becoming the first York Community High School student to earn this distinguished honor by completing 19 -- where did he find the time? 19 AP exams and scoring five on 14 of the 19. And whereas, these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School District 205 and the families of these students and the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit to School District 205 express congratulations to these students for these outstanding academic accomplishments. Congratulations to you all. Congratulations to your children.
We have one more recognition this evening I would like to mention. I know it's circled on everyone's calendar, but November 15th was designated the School Board Members' Day in the state of Illinois. And we didn't want to have that day go by without some recognition to our Board of Education. We would like to join all the districts in Illinois in really thanking these community volunteers that are, these seven that are up here, for their commitment and contributions to public schools. They do this with no monetary compensation. And I know people are skeptical. I get the phone calls saying, well, those people must be paid something. Look at all the hours they put in. The fact of the matter is, they are compensated exactly zero for all of their time. It is because they are dedicated to this community and to the young people that make up this community that they do this. And I can say, working with this Board of Education for three years now, what motivates them is doing the best for kids. This is an exceptional Board that never has their own agenda, that really tries to look out for every child, and make tough decisions sometimes on complex educational issues that affect the entire community and the lives of all of our students. And they do that with the best interest of every student in mind. Just to give you what the responsibility is, they have the oversight of a $119.5 million budget, 8,300 students from early childhood through 12th grade, nearly 1,000 employees, and 15 buildings that sit on 125 acres. And I can tell you, as everybody knows, education has never been more complex, and yet they are absolutely committed to make productive citizens out of our students and leaders in global society. They are elected officials. They represent the voice of parents and the voice of this community, and they take that very seriously. And again, with the idea that they're serving with the foremost priority of each individual student and what's best for them. I think we sometimes take all of this public service for granted, and I think it's just time to say, at least one day a year, say thank you, which is the least we can do for what they do on a weekly basis, on a regular basis, 365 days a year. And I am very, very fortunate to have a Board, and I think this community is fortunate to have a Board that really believes in students and what is best for all of our children. And so I would like to recognize Board President Jim Collins, Vice President Shannon Ebner, Secretary Karen Stufen, and Board Members Chris Bloom, John McDonough, Emily Bastido, and Dr. Margaret Harrell for your service. We started a little tradition last year, and we're going to continue it. In your recognition, we are going to donate a book to each elementary library in the Board Member's name. And while we didn't quite get the books in in a timely manner, they were hung up with Thanksgiving holiday shipping. I did want to point out that at your place is the books that will be donated. We got the suggestions from the librarians in each library, and they are such diverse titles as Creepy Carrots and The Day the Crayons Quit, along with I'm a Frog, a Pig Who Thinks Is a Frog. Who could not love books like that? So those will be going to each elementary library, along with all of those, with your names on them and recognition of this day. So again, our sincere appreciation and thank you. I won't make you stand up and shake our hands, but thank you very much.
So with titles like I Am a Frog, which administration member did decide which book was being donated in whose name?
That's protected under privacy law, and we're not going to be disclosing that.
So, thank you very much. The next thing on our agenda is public comment. I don't have any blue public comment cards, but if there are people in the audience that want to comment, you're welcome to come up. I will tell you at the beginning that it is our policy not to comment on public comment, but we do listen closely. So if you would come up, state your name and your address, and then you have two minutes to, three minutes, I'm sorry, to say what you want to say. Come on up. And you'll find a big oval button on the bottom of that microphone, and the red light will go on. Nope? There you go.
Two minutes. I can be quick. Three minutes. I just would like to register my family's protests, along with that of most of our friends regarding the new school year schedule, namely, namely, the start in mid-August and the ending in mid-May. I got ahead of myself. That was just the teaser. My name's Christopher Boutin, B-O-U-T-I-N. We're at 278 North Highview. Our objection was just that we have the entire school district, namely, kindergarteners all the way up through eighth grade, losing the month of August for summer camp and trips because they have to be back by the August start, so that high school students don't have to study over Christmas break and don't have to take their exams in January anymore. So on behalf of our family and our friends, we are asking to go back to the previous schedule, either for the entire system, or else uncoupling the elementary system from the high schools, and allowing the high schoolers to have this schedule, and allowing all of the rest of us to get our Augusts back and have the month and have our schedule as it was before. Push it again.
Anyone else? They said, please come up, push the oval button, state your name, your address.
Okay, Jim Quinn, 376 South Prospect here in Elmhurst. Thanks for the opportunity. I heard about this through Todd. Thanks, Todd. Just echoing the same sentiment that we shared earlier, to me, it comes down to family values. People talk about them. You watch the news. You see a lot of crazy things. We all scratch our head, wonder how come these things happen. It's because family values are deteriorating, and this is one of those things that contributes to that. You know, we're going to be working on Thanksgivings, you know, another type of example. We need leadership, folks. We need people who can see these things. And, you know, not always just think so transactionally in terms of driving test scores, but look at what the community needs in terms of family values and supporting the families in that community. Thanks.
Anyone else? Come on up.
This oval one here? Oh, all right. So I'm Todd Davis. I'm at 164 Arlington in Elmhurst. So I have some notes. So members of the District 205 Board, I was born and raised in Elmhurst, and I've come back here to work and raise my family. So I'm committed to the success of Elmhurst and our students, and I appreciate all your hard work to those ends. So I come tonight to make you aware of the sentiments of many parents, grandparents, students, and others in our community, that we just don't like our kids going back to school in mid-August. I've been following the school start dates for a few years, so I appreciate that you do have many different priorities to balance in making these decisions. Our presence tonight is to make an attempt to raise awareness about how important peak summer is to us and our families, and to try to change the calculus employed when drafting the year's calendar. It seems that all of us are dismayed to see the school year start earlier, and when I talk with people about this, no one likes to lose August, but they feel there's just no way to change the district's mind. I've been, I've been told by many that I'm wasting my time by coming here. One thing that struck me is not the apathy, but perhaps the resignation of so many in the community about this question. Well, I'm not resigned, and I think we should start a process instead of stopping. I ask you to consider the perspective of those who treasure the most reliably beautiful weeks of the year. August is family time. We only get so many summers with our children, and our kids only get so many weeks of unstructured time to explore and learn on their own. Let them be outside during the best weeks of the year. Peak summer in Elmhurst really starts on the Fourth of July and goes through Labor Day, nine weeks. That's all we got with the old schedule, starting after Labor Day. The current schedule takes two of those nine, almost a quarter of peak summer. I think it's a terrible misallocation of our precious weather resource, to put it economically. Our pools sit unused now for weeks in 90-plus degree weather. Though it might seem difficult or impractical, I remain convinced there's some way to move the state, the start date, rather, back, possibly after Labor Day. Perhaps a slightly shorter fall term, trimesters, whatever. Let's get creative and find a way, and one maybe that won't even move the exams back after Christmas. It can be done, I think, if we put some effort into it. So consider also that if we start later, we might be the envy of the Chicago area. People would move here just to get our schedule. Elmhurst would be seen as wise and sensible, and not following the latest trends, but rather respecting the family and the rhythms of the seasons. So I and many with me would be happy to serve on any subcommittee, get signatures, or do whatever is needed to help get this change effected. So let's figure this out together. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Is there one more?
Hi, my name is Ollie McCarthy. I live at 353 South Street, and I'm jumping on this bandwagon too. I'm here for the same reason. It's kind of hard to find, follow Todd's eloquence, but I will just be very brief in saying that it's really just horrible to have to send the kids back. For a mom to, to like panic on August 1st about having to get the kids back to school when the sun, the sun is shining, and we want to go to the beach, and we want to go on vacation, and then having them out the last week in May when everything is canceled because it's in the 60s, pools can't open because it has to be at least 69 degrees. It's just really a practicality on my part, and it makes me very sad to have to send them back that early. So I hope you consider, at least even a week, to have them, just like Todd was saying and Jim was saying, to, you know, enjoy these really, really precious weeks. We don't have a lot of good, you know, a good weather in the summertime, so, or all year long. So, so our kids can play outside and go to the pools and go to the beach. So
I'll ask you one more time. Anyone else?
Pierre Payjack, 165 South Rex, Elmhurst. I concur with a lot of the concerns about the schedule. Again, we have, and I can't, Todd had a great speech there, and I think it was very well versed and hopefully hit home. You know, again, we have very little time to spend with our kids as they're growing up. You know, everyone wants to go on trips and enjoy the summer. I remember a year ago, in the middle of, I think it was, end of May, it was snowing. I mean, our weather patterns have somehow shifted, really. And to take away two of the weeks that really are the precious, precious weeks of the year to go back to school early is, there has to be some way to readjust this. Those are precious weeks with our family that, please, consider it, think about it, put it on the table for discussion, and hopefully you can make the right decision. So, thank you.
Good evening. Dan Grant, I live at 264 North Glenview. And I just want to echo what everybody else has been saying. I mean, we understand the economics of running a school district and the economics of, you know, having a high school and a grade school or grade schools on a different schedule, but it does come down to family time. You know, as a working professional, it's difficult to find that time, and it seems like summertime is the only time to do it. We live in a, you know, as you can see outside, it's snowing right now, and it's, you know, November. So I think it's, it's difficult to find that time, and the end of the summer is that time for a lot of people. It seems like everybody's schedules are opened up, and limiting the amount of time that we have in August, you know, kind of impedes our family time and the time we can spend with our children. So, you know, with that in mind, you know, again, I'm echoing what everybody else said. If you could at least consider the option of possibly moving the school, school year back by a week, and at least reevaluating possibly the school timeframe going forward in terms of your breaks during the year, maybe we can work together and find a solution for
Okay. Next on our agenda is superintendent's communication. Mr. Purnell?
Yes, we have two FOIA requests that were received since our last meeting. One was for student records. That request was denied. One was for student records, that, uh, request was denied. One was for copies of Elmhurst Teachers Council contracts dating back to 2000, that request was granted. The second item on our agenda is our PMI five-year projections. Uh, Chris Welton will introduce, uh, the PMI projections this evening, um, and, uh, go from there, so.
Uh, we have Doreen Linderman here from PMA, um, will be presenting the five-year projections. Doreen's been working with, uh, Elmhurst School District for several years now.
Okay, thank you. Getting this pulled up real quick, okay. Here I, I have. I've got it. Okay, what I would like to share with you tonight is an update on the, the Elmhurst financial, financial plan. We have, we're last here in January and we did move it up a little bit this year. What I'm gonna do is start with the revenue side and then we will talk about the main assumptions that go into the model and then we'll take a look at the expenditures and how those will fit together, um, for the projections. Since January, we've updated, the fiscal year thirteen is now final and we have that audit in place and the fiscal year fourteen budget is currently in place, um, the budget that was approved by the board. And that's now our base on the projections, so when I go through the assumptions and talk about increases or decreases, it's gonna be from the FY14 budget numbers. Okay? And this first chart shows the revenue, um, that comes into the district for all funds by source and property taxes are gonna be the majority at eighty-four percent of your annual revenue. And that eighty-four percent comes in mainly in two large, uh, chunks in June and September when the property taxes are due. Um, so we are getting a large portion of that at the very end of the fiscal year, uh, through June thirtieth. The other local would include any types of student fees, um, interest income, any other miscellaneous income. General state aid is a small portion of the budget at two and a half percent and then all of the other state grants combined uh, come up to four point two percent and federal is very small at just under three percent. So very, uh, dependent on those local resources for funding. So we'll take a look at the property taxes because that's what's driving the projections on the revenue side. Um, the district is under the tax cap, so you are allowed to increase the taxes by the CPI that applies to that levy year. So this chart shows us the historical, um, five years of the CPI and you can see it's been up and down from zero point one to a high of three point oh. Uh, the, the 2013 levy, which will be finalized in December, uh, is utilizing the one point seven percent CPI increase. For next year, that two, twenty-fourteen levy, we'll know that number in January. Uh, we have assumed a one and a half percent and also again for fifteen and then brought that up to a one point eight following that for the future years. The one point eight percent is currently the five-year average, so these numbers have come down a little bit since the last time we looked at the projections. Um, the CPI is December to December is what's used in the tax cap formula. So you can read about it throughout the year as it's going up and down, but it's only the December number, um, that comes into play in the formula. We were through October at one point seven percent and typically it does go down a little bit in the last couple of months and we've seen the gas come down, that's been noticeable. Second, uh, piece that goes into that tax formula is new property. This is property that's coming onto the tax rolls for the first time in that levy year as new construction. Um, that is providing additional revenue to the district and in addition to the, the CPI increase. So you'll get the CPI increase plus that'll extend taxes to all the new properties. We have that large jump in the twenty, two thousand and eleven levy, uh, which was the hospital that came on and then came off again the following year, um, but that's why we have such a large spike. We are estimating another twenty million this year in new property. Uh, last year was twenty point four million, so we're, we're keeping that on target. And then we do anticipate some more properties next year, uh, that didn't get on the tax rolls in time. So we have thirty million and then we brought it down to twenty-five million per year, which is pretty average, um, looking back if we go further back in time. We used to have more like the fifty-four million if we could go back another ten years, um, that was providing a lot more sources of revenue for the district. Uh, but as the economy changed, so has the, the real estate market. The third factor that goes into the formula is the change in assessed valuation of the existing properties. So all of the properties that were taxed, were on the tax roll the prior year, what has their assessed valuation changed by? So we have had negative reassessments, um, for the last three years in a row and we're assuming another negative for the two thousand and thirteen levy. Uh, we put one more year of a small negative in, in, uh, fourteen and then we flattened that out for three years before we started to put any increases. And that's because the assessors are using a three-year average, uh, sales cycle on, uh, estimating the valuation of those properties. So just as it took a while for us to see our EAVs come down on our tax bills when the market changed, it's gonna take three years of increased, uh, prices for them to go back up. So it will be a little while before we see, um, values that we had before. And this chart I added actually this year just to show how much that EAV has fallen since two thousand and nine. Uh, we were at two point six billion, last year we were just over two billion and we're estimating to be slightly under the two billion mark for this year. And even with the, we have small increases built in, that's still not getting us back up to the levels that we saw uh, just even two, three years ago. General state aid, um, is another assumption that we, we'll talk about tonight. This chart shows the dollars that have been received and this year's budget and then the projected dollars per the state formula. The district falls in the alternate funding formula and the foundation level has not changed in the last several years that the state uses in this formula. So they set a foundation level, which is usually what you'll read in the paper when the, when the state finalizes its budget and it's been six thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars for several years. As, um, EAVs fall, the local resources per student declines and entitlements go up. So we know our EAV has fallen, it has fallen all throughout the state. So entitlements have been growing all across the state and they've been unable to fund the sixty-one nineteen um, with their current, uh, funding budget. So they started to prorate those amounts. Uh, in fiscal year twelve, they only paid out ninety-five percent of the entitlements. Last year they funded eighty-nine percent and this year we're at eighty-eight point seven. So not, almost what we had last year, but not quite. Um, what we've assumed in the projections going forward is an eighty-five percent, uh, funding requirement. Just to give an idea, this year, uh, the twenty-fourteen, you see the two point nine million that's in the budget. The entitlement for the district was three point three million, so that, um, proration, uh, was a four hundred thousand dollar loss on the revenue side for the district for just this year. For enrollment, um, we have historical enrollment here and then also the current year of thirteen fourteen enrollment at eighty-three oh one. We typically use fall housing report, which is September thirtieth because your enrollment will vary all throughout the year. And then based on, um, current enrollment, the district has projected forward, uh, some small increases but really leveling off and it's hovering right around that eighty-four hundred mark. Um, it actually increases in twenty eighteen to eighty-four sixty-seven, so goes up a hundred and sixty and then comes down a little bit too in that last year. So fairly stable enrollment, you can see it's, it's grown over the past few years, um, but at, at a relatively medium pace. Based on those enrollment projections, um, we take a look at staffing and this year the district has, um, six hundred and twenty-seven point seven full-time equivalents, um, of certified staff, teaching staff that's on the salary schedule in the contract. We have included in, increases in enrollment or increases in staff based on enrollment increases and we've also included additional four, um, staff members per year to allow for additional special ed teachers or any other requirements that might come. So we're increasing over the five years at, um, thirty-four FTEs by twenty nineteen, but twenty of those are based on, are allowed for the special ed or other programs that come into play and the rest is based on enrollment. On the expenditure side, this chart shows then how that money is spent throughout this year's budget. Salaries and benefits are gonna be, always be the largest expense for any school district, um, so it's about seventy percent of your budget. Other objects, um, is eleven point four percent. Because we have all of the funds included in this chart, this varies a little bit from last year if you compare it because we're including now the debt service fund in this chart. Um, so of that eleven percent, that's about thirteen plus million. Uh, over ten million of that is for your debt service payments. Um, the next largest, uh, expense in that category would be your special ed tuition or your tuition for students placed out of the district. Purchased services are for any contracted services that the district, um, hires, such as your transportation services. Supplies and materials includes supplies that we would think of in the classroom, but also some utilities and capital outlay, a very small portion of the budget along with the non-capitalized equipment. So we'll focus on salaries and benefits, um, for the assumptions. The district has a contract in place, uh, with teaching staff through fiscal year fifteen. Um, beyond that, the salaries are gonna be subject to negotiations, um, so we have put in a placeholder. We've assumed as the step would continue, which is what that last year the contract is including. So we've carried that out for the remainder of the projections and then we've tied all other salaries, um, for other employees to the CPI. So we're using, um, one and a half percent, that's what we projected on the revenue side. For health benefits, we've increased the district's cost at eight percent per year and that's been pretty typical that I've seen from many districts. For the non-personal costs, we started with an average, uh, assumption of a two percent increase across the board, but we went through all of those line items and pulled out any one-time items that's in this year's budget and talked about items that needed to be added in for future budgets. So we did make some adjustments of the tuition for outside placements, we, placements we did increase at ten percent um, because we don't have a lot of control over what the tuition costs will be or having students moving into the district that have, uh, special needs. And we have included year by year, um, the district's plan for purchasing textbooks, technology, and also capital projects, uh, per the district's long-range plan. So taking all of those assumptions now and starting with the fiscal year fourteen budget, which is our first column here, um, the, in this chart is the operating funds that I've labeled at the top. This pulls out the debt service and the capital projects because those payments can skew, um, the operating results. So we'll look at just the operating funds first and we have revenue coming in of a hundred and six million, expenditures of a hundred and five million for a surplus of a million dollars, but then we have, um, transfers going out for debt service payments, um, of one point four, so net fund balance would decline by about four hundred thousand dollars if we come in exactly at budget. Um, the fund balance then below shows the beginning fund balance and the, uh, projected year-end fund balance, um, which is just under five months of operating expenditures on hand or forty-one percent fund balance. The following year then, when we put in those assumptions, um, we'll see that, uh, the deficit, or sorry, the surplus actually grows slightly to one point one million and then the transfers actually go down a little bit. So we're actually, the surplus deficit line is positive in years fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. And then we have basically a slight negative that, to me, is balanced in the size of a budget, um, and then another surplus. Just wanted to point out in that, the, uh, transfers line, we have debt service payments coming out, um, of the O and M fund, but then we also have to start funding some of those capital projects in the capital projects fund. Um, so we have transfers from O and M to cover some of those expenditures, that's why it's increased in those two years. And this chart does, then, just those fund balances, um, starting with the end of fiscal year fourteen, projected ending at forty-three million, which is that red line. Based on those projections, fund balance would remain pretty stable and grow slightly by twenty nineteen to forty-six million. The blue line on this chart is approximating your low point in cash because you get such a large portion of your revenues at the very end of the fiscal year, we have to take a look at what do you have in the bank prior to that, that tax money coming in, just to make sure that you don't have any short-term, um, cash flow needs and we're not anticipating that to happen in the projection period. And then we added in all funds, um, to get a total look at what's happening. So this is adding in the capital project expenditures and your debt service, uh, levy dollars coming in as well as the payments going out. So it's very similar, we're, we're looking at, um, a two and a half million dollar deficit for this year, but that's driven by the capital projects. That, that's why it has grown from the previous chart. And then just a very small, uh, deficit in fifteen and then as those projects change, um, you'll see the, other expenditures, um, fluctuating from a five percent to a two, two percent increase year to year because we have input those specific expenses, again, for textbooks, technology, as well as capital projects. So this, um, shows then the fund balances would, uh, stay pretty stable. We're starting at the projected year-end this year of forty-seven million, which is a forty percent fund balance and at the end of five years, we were still be at a thirty-eight or thirty-nine percent fund balance, um, with about the same amount of money. And this again shows, uh, just that ending fund balance by year, um, for all of the funds in, in the, uh, district's budget. And now I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Yes.
Um, the low point balance, is that something that usually show with the percentage or am I thinking of the, um, year-end balance? I thought we usually look at the percentage of that low point, no?
Our policy, our policy is set up at a target of twenty-six percent. That's the year-end fund balance.
Okay, so I'm thinking of the year-end fund balance, not the low point.
As a percentage of annual expenditures.
Okay.
No?
Couple questions. I, I thought I heard you say that you use the fall housing report to determine new student enrollment?
No, I'm sorry, that's for the historical enrollment numbers. Through, um, through your, the twelve thirteen school year, those numbers are all pulled from fall housing and then the district provides the current enrollment and also then the projected enrollment.
I, I don't understand. We, we don't use historical enrollment numbers just simply by the kids who attend our school?
Well, they are the district's historical numbers. Um, you have to file the enrollment as of a specific date for this one report. Um, so that's the only reason I mention is because we use that report because it's the same day each year. Um, because your, your enrollment can go up and down between your six-day enrollment and then especially with high school, um, you might have early graduation and your enrollment may decline in the spring. So it can change throughout the year, that's why we like to just pick one point in time to go by.
Uh, I'm, I guess I don't understand the use of the housing report.
Well, it i- it is numbers that are provided to the state from the district.
Oh, I'm sorry, is that a reference to attendance, the word housing report, it's not? Oh, it's students housed in the district? I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
It's usually September thirtieth, right?
Right.
Is the fall housing report date.
Alright.
Yeah, John, they, they have a few dates they could use. We, the administration always reports to us in September what the sixth, the sixth day of school enrollment number was. This, this is just a, a date clearly, you know, a few weeks later. And, uh, clearly you use that because it's the exact same date every year?
Every year, correct.
So for consistency's sake.
I see, okay. I'm, definitional problem, I guess. Um, the question I have is the future, uh, student enrollment numbers are, how do you, how do you get those?
Those actually were calculated, um, in the district office, I'll let you explain.
We use some, um, we use the cohort survival method to do some internal projections. Um, I just looked at what Casarda's, um, enrollment numbers were and he went for the, for the whole district, he went out to two thousand and eighteen and his number was eight thousand four fifty-four where this projection here says eight thousand four sixty-seven, so they're, they're very So they're, they're very close.
I'm just wondering if it might be useful for us for this purpose as well as other purposes to extend the, or to bring Casarda back. To extend the study beyond and kind of plan for the future beyond the end of that last report. How old is that report now?
It is six years old, I believe. We, we are going to do that. We're going to do, we're bringing a, we're drafting an RFP and bringing it to the next finance committee. A draft of an RFP for demographers.
Oh, that's great.
I was planning on talking about that topic in the summary, so can we?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
No, let's, by all means.
Up to you.
Sorry, I missed it. The capital expenditures you talked about. There's apparently a transfer fund to the capital funds from the operating funds, is that right?
That's, that's right.
And the capital projects that you use to determine what that transfer would be and how much would be expended are determined by what document?
The district's, the exact name of it, but it's your long-range plan includes life safety projects. Other maintenance projects that goes out almost to twenty twenty, I want to say.
Right.
We had, we had the tenure in the finance committee, I think it was in August. That we had put together a ten-year long-term facility plan and she used those figures.
That thing that's underfunded for the next ten years.
Correct.
How did you determine how much transferring because obviously you didn't, you know, wipe out that underfunding entirely?
Well, the capital projects fund is expecting to receive some of the TIF revenue that will be coming in. So that was enough to fund the first couple of years. But then we have a larger project coming in in those, those two years where you see the extra transfers. So it, once that fund would have gone negative without transferring money in. Then once those large projects are finished, I didn't have to make any transfers in that last year. And actually there would be balance to apply towards the fiscal year twenty and so forth.
Okay.
So it is covered mostly by revenue that's going into that fund, but based on the schedule for expenditures.
Five years. It's a five-year projection.
Yes.
So there's the, five years after that, we still have a big question mark. Go ahead.
Can I, can I just add to John's question? So do you know off the top of your head, in our, in our ten-year capital projects, the life safety study? If memory serves me correctly, more than half of the expenditures are weighted to beyond five years. Is that, is that correct? Do you, anybody know that off the top of their head? We'll, we'll go back.
It was if you included Lincoln. So that was part of twenty-eight or whatever. What we kind of, the average was about a million and a half bucks a year, which was maintenance capex. So that's the assumption. It's using that ten-year plan. But the assumption during that period was about a million and a half bucks a year, I think. You know, some years may be a little bit more, some may be a little bit less. And so I'm not, we can look at it. I'm not so sure it's backend loaded. I think there were some big projects that were thrown in there that were optional.
If you use a million and a half a year, you're, you know, you're at fifteen million over ten years. But our architects projected twenty-eight million over ten years.
And I think that there were some optional big projects in that number that also included something that would be backed by potentially some additional TIF revenue that you would do. I think Churchville and Fisher and.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm just curious as to what percentage of that is in this five-year projection and what's not.
Because we didn't assume the, the TIF revenue for Churchville and Fisher, we didn't assume the expense either. So if you were to put those expenses back in, whatever year they may be, they would come in at the same time your TIF revenue would come in. So we viewed that as a wash for purposes of long-term planning.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Hi, Doreen. Thank you very much for the presentation. A couple of questions related to the benefits. So the first question, you assumed, I think you said, an eight percent increase for health benefits. And that was based off a historical perspective. Do you have any, are there any thoughts, projections on what effect the Alternative Care Act would have on these health benefits? Would be my, that's my first question.
Okay.
And then my second question. It specifically said health benefits and I'm wondering about where the other benefits were calculated in particularly pension, those types of things. So if you could help me on that.
Sure, I'll answer your second question first if I can.
Okay, thank you.
The pension calculations take place following the salary projections. So it's maintaining the current funding levels that you have to contribute for IMRF and for TRSTHIS. Those are included and they're based off the salary projection. For the health benefits, I believe Chris had gotten some information related to what any costs might be for Obamacare or the Affordable Care Act. And that was going to be beyond twenty nineteen, I believe.
Well, the, the Affordable Care Act fees are included in premium increases. And, and the eight percent was based on just trend. I mean, it's, it's hard to really estimate where insurance premiums are going. But the Affordable Care Act is, we, we included it in the eight percent. But it, it's a hard number to estimate at this time what, what that impact will be. But the, the first fees were included in this, in the, in the budget, budgeted premiums. And there will be more fees added on. And I, I think we did include the Cadillac tax estimate in two thousand eighteen.
It might have been just in that last year or two and it was not a large amount.
It wasn't, it wasn't a large amount estimated by the broker.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Karen?
Thanks, Doreen. If you look at slide fifteen and we're talking about the fund balance percentages. Or fund balance as number of months of expenditures. That, that's pretty typical of what we would want to make sure that we have enough funds to cover our expenses over, you know, a little over four months. It's typical, right? And that's what, that's what that's telling us and that's what we want to have.
Yeah, I mean, each district sets their own benchmark based on your comfort level and also based on where your district's located. Because the Coller County districts are getting that June property tax money right at the end of the fiscal year. Cook County gets their big distribution in March, so they've already spent some of that. And some of the downstate, when you go south of eighty, a lot of them don't get tax money till July first. So their fund balances look very low compared to the others. The state for the financial profile score, to achieve the top score, you would need twenty-five percent of a fund balance. You have with this forty-seven million, we have to assume that fifty percent of the property taxes is included in that. So if we were to take that out, really you would be right there, I mean flat.
You know, so it shows some, but, but really, I mean, this is pretty much a wash. I mean, this is as close, close as we can get.
Pretty much what you have left is, is the early tax money, which is money to fund next year's expenditures.
Right. So, so really this then leads to the question of, this is kind of a maintenance PMA projections. This is not pension shift. I don't know if that's what you were talking about, Dr. Harrell. So that doesn't include any of those assumptions, any transformational things that we would want to do in education here. And I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, it's just, it's maintaining existing programs and staff. We do have the additional certified staff. And I forgot to mention, we also included four support staff or aides each year as well. That was just a footnote. So we do have some plans for additional staff, but no new programs. So you're exactly right.
Anything else? Chris?
Just to follow up, just having been in the inside of this model. Yeah, this is a baseline budget, it's a maintenance budget. Chris, the assumptions on curriculum and technology. Because, so we already talked about in this budget, and I think, I don't know if it's the first time ever, but it's the first time in a long time that I've seen this where we've actually rolled up the capital side of this. So this is an entire picture of the district. We've included approximately a million and a half dollars worth a year in maintenance expense, which is a real expense that, I mean, before from a budgeting standpoint, we kind of ignored. From a curriculum and technology standpoint, those are the only other things that are in there. And Chris, do you know off the top of your head kind of ballpark what we included in there? So the assumptions qualitatively around textbooks. So there's a textbook cycle that's assumed in here that's getting back to an average cycle. There's a technology, you know, I think completion of our technology plan and then some further investment. Could you talk a little bit about those two assumptions?
Yes. From a, from a textbook standpoint, where the current budget is at nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Next year, fourteen, fifteen, we put in one point eight million. The following year, one point seven million. The following year, two million. Following year, one point seven million and then one point two million. Those, that's based on the six-year curriculum adoption schedule that, that the curriculum department has put together. And then you also asked about tech, the technology. I, I don't think I have the technology numbers with me. Go ahead.
The, basically the technology budget fluctuates a little bit from year to year. It's relatively close to the target numbers that I had provided in my report before. But for, for the fifteen fiscal year, it actually goes, the total is about three point three million. And then it basically drops down about two point seven plus or minus for the next several years beyond that. The, the one thing that does change from year to year more significantly is the amount of principal that would be the principal value of the capital equipment that would be leased on an annual basis. And it's just a projection based on knowing the life cycle of some of the equipment we have in the district. I try to project out and determine what those lease principal values might look like. So those bounce up and down a little bit to, from anywhere from one point four million to as low as four hundred thousand from, from year to year, depending on the equipment that's being replaced.
And from a strategic standpoint, we're still, we have another year left of kind of building the infrastructure, which is the, the three point three, which is a plan that we've seen in the past. At this table. And, and at that point, we feel like we've got the pipes that are fat enough. You know, at least until they change the technology again. And then what are the assumptions around the remainder of the spending? Where, where is that going?
There's, the technology budget for a few years, with the exception of, I think, one year during the, earlier and during the EPR process. The technology budget always has a small amount, a relatively small amount, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's set aside for, you know, innovative, new innovative technology. That's what's fueled our one-to-one pilots, it's fueled our, some of our smart board deployments, things like that. So it's sort of the tech, the, the line item that we use with the curriculum department to determine what, what new technologies do they want to deploy and evaluate? And sort of seed some, seed some technology in the classrooms. The remainder of, outside of the infrastructure spend is, when it comes to pure devices or technology is the annual refresh of the equipment that, the, the end-user equipment that we have. So student laptops, desktops, introducing some new virtual desktop technology, things like that. So there are, you know, outs, but that is part of the capital lease cost. Let's see, the rest of it really is maintenance, maintenance costs.
I say, I think that's the point is just making sure that the two point seven is what it costs to kind of run the district. Just like it costs us a million and a half dollars a year to keep the buildings from falling apart. This is supporting, it's the technology, the hardware and the support that goes with keeping, keeping up with the baseline. It's not, this is not investment in innovative, you know, curricular technology or anything like that.
That's correct. In fact, generally speaking, I've done, I've, with your help, developed the, the three areas that we're focusing, which are to, to maintain, enhance, or to transform. And typically, looking through the years, there's about a, anywhere from eleven percent to eighteen percent of the total technology budget is, is what we categorize as transformational. The rest of it is either maintain and enhance. Now, the enhancement really is, it, it may be like an upgrade of, of switches or upgrade of, of computers. So it's not really growing per se. It's, it's refreshing with newer and later technology, keeping up with the technology trends, but more from a replacement. So it's a little bit, the maintenance is a pure maintenance, like warranty costs and, and licensing and things like that.
Right.
The enhancement is closer to maybe fifty percent of the budget is, is to keep our existing technology running and current. And then the, the small, like eleven to eighteen percent is what we would categorize as transformational.
Sure. So there's a little bit in there, but it's, it's not.
Right.
So I mean, I guess the point to the board is, is we talked about a process where we were going to put a baseline in place. And this was, and this is not meant to be predictive by any stretch of the imagination, but it gives us a relative idea of, you know, are things wildly negative, positive? You know, or whatnot. And I think what we have here is, is a pretty middle-of-the-road kind of situation that we're left in after we invest in, in baseline. And so our, our challenge, and I think that the rhythm that we said we were going to get into would be, you know, continuing discussions around what, what we want to layer in as far as our priorities go. And then, you know, using this as a management tool. And, and it, it's not necessarily that it has to be finished. I mean, I think we were going to talk about coming back in January at some point in time with, with kind of adding in some things as we start to get to longer-term budgeting. But this is a process that I think from a discipline standpoint is just ongoing. So it's, it's not, you know, hey, okay, so we got between now and January to come up with everything else you want to put in here and then we're going to do this again. But I think that the challenge that goes out to, I mean, I think all of our, of our committees, and I think it also dovetails with some of the work that Dave's doing with, you know, as we talked about transformational and things like that, Lighthouse District and whatnot. Is to start to reflect those priorities within this budget. But this gives us a starting point. So I, I just wanted to point that out, you know, whether it's investments in curriculum or professional development or, you know, there, there's nothing in here for, you know, long-term capital on the facility side, building new schools or, or anything like that. So, you know, I think our challenge is to move this forward and then use this as a tool to start to manage priorities as we, as we talk about where to invest. The last piece that I'd like to ask the board about is, is that as I look at this, as I look at a fund balance that is relatively healthy and a, and a budget that's, that's reasonably break even. Do you feel comfortable today, and this is a, just a, do you, do you feel comfortable, if I look at this, I'm looking at, I'm very hopeful. I feel comfortable saying that in fifteen, I, I don't think we would have to cut staff. I think given where this is. And the question is, rather than wait until January to make that statement. You know, if we're looking at this now, what would be the downside of, of making that statement now? Particularly from the standpoint of knowing that, giving some certainty to the staff, because we have turnover in teachers every year anyway. And giving them an opportunity, knowing full well where we're going as early as possible, to go out and recruit great teachers. To the extent that we know we hire teachers every year before, you know, early, I guess. And, and so I mean, I don't know, you know, the opinion from the administration if it would be beneficial to have us weigh in early at this point in time. If there's some value to kind of taking cuts off the table. And how comfortable the board would feel making that statement at this point in time.
Well, I appreciate the suggestion. I think, I think there's a lot of merit to the suggestion. My only, as superintendent, I would just kind of caution, we're in November. I'm not sure we're going to get hurt by recruiting, by not waiting until December, January, early January. I would like to get to the staff and look at what staffing actually looks like. And we had this discussion last year about coming to the board with our staffing recommendations in January and having that in place. Both, you know, regular staffing and then have you look at discretionary and, and see how comfortable you are with that. I think you could say we're not going to have, you know, staffing RIFs based on budget. I think given what you're saying, that may be true. I would be cautious though to say we're not going to have any RIFs. say we're not going to have any RIFs. I think there's a lot of other things we would like to consider before we make that commitment. But I think you could probably say, solely for budget reasons, we're not going to have RIFs of certified staff coming up. But, you know, with enrollment changes and all of that, I would be cautious just that blanket. So, be my cautionary to the board.
And thank you, because I said that wrong. I mean, I mean, we would, we would be looking at this from the standpoint of, of just looking at this budget, saying, is the budget going to drive RIFs in 15? I would just like to ask the board what their feeling is on, on that question.
I, I agree with what you're saying, based on, on these projections, that we have a solid maintenance budget. So, yeah, I, I agree.
Anybody else in agreement? I mean, I'm just trying to give you guys a heads up as early, I mean, if it's, if it's sitting here and we know it, why not, why, why wait for some checkbox later on if?
Right. And I think Dave brings up a good point, that it looks like, you know, for budgetary reasons, it looks like we're, we're in the clear now for staffing.
For one year, please.
For one, for one year, yeah. For, for next year. Let's, so I think, I think Dave's right to caution us to not make such a broad statement, because you may have enrollment shifts, you may have course offering shifts at, at the high school. And, and I think we're safe. If the administration came back late December, early January and said, all right, here's our staffing plan, we've, we've taken a look at retirements, et cetera, et cetera. You know, maybe if we're recruiting teachers, maybe, maybe to cover 80% of those positions or something, we, we would obtain the margin of safety and the, and the first mover advantage that, that we seek when, when making offers to really good candidates. And maybe that's the compromise that, that we should pursue. That's, that's my two cents.
All right.
Okay. John was looking very pensive over there. I was trying to give him time to...
Maybe he's thinking about it, you know.
I think it's a really nice goal. And I look forward to administration figuring out whether that's something that we can do. I think, no, I think it'd be really good for the teachers to hear that sort of thing. It, you know, I know there's a lot of, probably a sense that, you know, the class sizes, we heard a lot about class sizes during the, during the public forum. I'm not sure if it came up at all in the, in the Harris poll surveys, but it seemed like it was a very sensitive thing. And if we could, you know, perhaps provide some reassurance as well as get better candidates, this is a great direction for the district.
The issue that, that Chris is bringing up here, by the way, is that traditionally, our district has withheld making offers to new teachers until April. After, after our March meeting where, where we approved the staffing level and, and approved the budget, or tentatively approved the budget for the following year, then our offers go out to teachers. Whereas some very aggressive districts are, are making offers to top candidates coming out of school as early as January. So, so the question is, how can we put ourselves in that first mover advantage and yet not overextend our job offers to the point where we're making job offers to people that we shouldn't be, because we don't have a job waiting for them? So, you know, what, what is the percentage of the seats that we expect to fill? What is the safe percentage to be extending offers, you know, as early as possible? So we'll, we'll leave that up to the administration to bring their opinion to the table late December, early January, and move forward from there. So, Aaron?
The only thing that I would add is, I mean, that's the whole reason why we really want to look at the, the budget, right? And so that we can, we can look at it strategically. So from that standpoint, absolutely, it's a great idea. We have to...
By moving up our budget process, this, this is what it's allowing us to do. Okay? All right. Doreen, thank you very much.
Thank you. And as we get new information in throughout the year, we'll continue with updating the board as CPI comes out, EAV in the spring.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chris?
You were right. I just, I looked it up real quick. CPI month, a year-over-year, 12-month trailing in October was 1%. That was the one that was just released. So it is tracking well, so.
It, it's trending downward for the year.
Yeah.
But we'll see what happens.
The, the 1.7 is, is the December through October, so it's just 10 months.
Yeah.
We always look at it from December where, yeah. But yeah, it is lower. Okay, thanks.
Yes, I think the board had desire to talk about the impact fee related to any kind of new construction that is affecting the school district on a short-term, long-term basis. And this, this discussion took an urgency because of the Bertow Hospital property being for sale and the assumption by some that it would be developed into housing, and that would have an impact on our student enrollment. So the question came, what is really the amount of money that might be a marker when it comes to what an impact would be with new students coming in and that kind of rate? And I think Chris said at the last meeting, Chris Walton would work with Finance Committee to come up with some, some kind of estimates to have a discussion at the board table. So that's what this agenda item is about this evening. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris Blum. I think he has the...
Apologize for the size of the font. So what, what we have here, it's, it's not just, I guess the, the numbers here aren't just an impact fee discussion, but an impact discussion. I mean, I think the desire of the board is to have a discussion around the impact of development on, on our schools. And I think the important part is just recognize that, you know, this is an issue that we're regularly dealing with. Elmhurst is not a community where, where they're throwing up subdivisions and cornfields regularly, and we're not having 50 houses dropped into our community regularly. So, you know, I think this is a process of educating the community on the impact of that type of development. It's just not something that happens every day. I think it's important to the community to understand the facts, you know, because we're still, we're still in a process. So in, in order to look at the impact that a development would have on the district, we looked at the spreadsheet divided into two parts. There's the, kind of the impact on our facilities, our capacity, or what I call capital, which is where we, where would we put the students and what would it cost us to house them? And then the second piece is operational, which is what's it cost us to educate them? And, and what we've done is looked at three scenarios. Again, you can make your own, happy to input the numbers in the model. The logic flows where you could probably do this with a calculator. But there's three scenarios. The first column uses census averages, which comes out of US census data for the most part, and then some assumptions from, in some cases, our, our engineering firms and building firms. The, the second column is a midpoint range, based on some assumptions. And the third column is kind of a higher, obviously a higher-end range. And, and the difference between those two and the first column is, when you really look at, asking yourself whether what's going to be built on that site would be median $319,000 home, $341,000 homes, I mean, or whether than more than likely, they would be $700,000, $800,000 homes. The second is, in, in looking at what the, when you look at average number of students or homes with students in them, I don't see retirees buying houses, you know, $750,000 houses in this part of town. And, and the question to us should be whether or not we should make some adjustments on, on the penetration rate of children in those homes and how many of them will flow to us. So, and I think just to, to, to be clear, you know, our, our capital cost per new home basically takes the square foot per student times the building cost per square foot, times the average number of students in a new home, times the number of homes with, or the percentage of homes with new students. So it's a, it's a pretty straightforward math problem that, that rolls down the sheet there. And I, I think the takeaway there is, is that the impact on us is, is significantly higher than the impact fee that's out there. And this is not meant to be a, you know, a negotiation or identification of, of what the correct impact fee level is. This is rather just a, an opportunity to put the facts out there to, to start a discussion with our city partners and, and what a reasonable fee would be. So I think if, if you look at the calculations, you see that, you know, at, at a median range, it's $15,000 a, a student. But if you had penetration rates of 60 to, up to 100% of the homes had, had students in them, that the impact on us could be anywhere from 50 to $90,000 a home. And if you multiply that out times the number of homes, and we're using somewhere between 50 and 60 is, is what, is what we've heard, that you're talking about a capital impact on the district of, you know, in, in the millions of dollars upwards of, of two and a half. So that just gives an order of magnitude of, of the impact that a development will have on, on the, on the district and ultimately on the, on the local taxpayer. So the, the bottom half of the grid is, was designed to, to frame out the, the budget, the impact on our operating budget. And basically what that is, is the number of homes times the number of homes with kids, times the average number of students per home gets you to the number of students that could potentially come in, which, you know, I think a reasonable number, if you, if you split the difference between the two is somewhere in the 70, could be as high, could be in the hundreds. And the operating cost per student, we spent $12,660 per student, which came out of the, the latest ISBE report card, which then relates to that, the line that summarizes our annual operating cost increase due to the influx of kids. And then recognizing that, that there is tax revenue, because that property is currently not on the tax rolls. But the bottom line is there, you can see that, that the annual operating impact in District 205 is negative. So we do not receive as much tax revenue from these homes as it costs us to educate the kids coming from these homes in, in most cases. And that impact could be as high as a million dollars. And, and so trying to, again, not saying it's going to be a million dollars, but, but establishing the boundaries from which to, to have that discussion. You know, I, I think, you know, the reason that this discussion is important is, is because as these numbers show, there's a significant impact on the district. And, you know, I think there's, there's limited options that we have to, to address the impact. I mean, I think from a, from a practical standpoint, we're talking about, you know, potentially increasing class sizes initially, then, you know, redrawing boundaries to accommodate these kids, and then potentially construction, depending on where that goes. So there are material impacts on the district. This is a community decision on, on, you know, what we want out of this. And, and so I thought it was important to get the impact quantified so that we were understanding the order of magnitude there. And I guess the question, the question to anybody here is, just is, are there any questions on, on the way these numbers were put together? Any comments on that?
Go ahead, Shannon.
Yeah, in the Finance Committee meeting, we talked about percentage of homes with students. And we didn't, the consensus of the committee was we didn't want to go too far to 100. It's kind of unrealistic. So we didn't want to have some really huge number out there, like showing here, 5.1 million. So I'm just wondering, you did, the percentages are switched a little bit than what we talked about in the Finance Committee. So I was just wondering about the rationale for that.
Well, I, I think there was, there was a mid-case presented. There was, I think in committee, I heard, you know, we had a debate over what to put in that column. I think that I ended up splitting the difference and just putting a third column in so that everybody was, so, so I didn't change the high end. We left that where it was, just added another one out there to show what it could be. And that is, that is more than likely the, you know, the worst-case scenario for, you know, budget-wise for us, is the third column. The second column's what we talked about in committee, and the first column was, was just based on the averages. That's the change.
I didn't realize that. Also, the average number of students per home, the, the numbers different, 1.76 up to 2.25. We had that more even.
Yeah. And I, and I went back and sharpened the pencil after we had that discussion. I was using, I was using kindergarten through 12th grade, and we were comparing it to families with children under 18 years and under. And I left out early childhood and preschool from our number as we looked at our teachers. Now, you, you would expect the average kids that we have in our district to go down. Our, we get, of the K through 12 kids, we get 85% of those in our district. But if you add in early childhood, because we don't run preschool, I mean, we have a, we have a limited preschool capacity here. There are a lot of private preschools in Elmhurst. So when you add that in, it drops the average number of kids down. About 77% of the students in Elmhurst are in our schools, including those. So that, that was the change. And I noticed that after, as we were preparing to put the final copy out here. And just to be intellectually correct, you had to, we had to true that up.
Aaron, go ahead.
Thanks. Okay, so bear with me then. During committee, we said 85% of the homes that have students that are going to be educated, 85% comes into the public school district. That was K through 12. Then when you add early childhood, the number is 77%. So, bottom line is, it's still 85% of the students, once they get to K through 12, will come to us.
Right, right. But I was measuring it against a census headcount that was, was, you know, kids zero through 18 years old. So just to make sure that I lined up the age group of the headcount with the age group of our students, it was more correct to include the early childhood.
Right. So we're still going to have the same impact as we talked about in committee for, you know, kindergarten through 12th grade. So that cost is still the same number.
Absolutely. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, you know, accused of being overly biased one way or another. I think these are very fair numbers that we've put out here.
John?
The average number of students per home, I'm sorry, number of new students line, what would be the distribution of those numbers among the different schools? I guess what I'm, I'm saying is, yeah, you might look district-wide and somebody might say, no, there's not much impact, because you put some here, you put some there. But the impact of this one location would be in one elementary school district. And I'm wondering, what would ha, what percentage of these kids would be headed to Field School? What percentage would be headed to Sandberg? What, you know, with our current school boundaries? And what percentage would be handing, heading to York?
Yeah. I mean, if they were all fifth graders, I could tell you that.
You and your magic census data can't answer that for me.
Right. I did not, I did not grab the breakdown.
Okay, lots of little ones, is what you're saying. Then that's the best guess.
It could be lots of little ones. It could be a bunch of McDonoughs, you know, or a bunch of Blooms or, you know, I, I don't know.
That would be tragic.
But, and, and again, the purpose of this is to try to, try to give a baseline for a discussion. And I think what we want to do with this is, one, you just communicate to the community the impact it has on us. I think number two is, I think, and start, start that discussion with the city around revisiting impact fees and, and what that means to us. And then, you know, I think, three, understand from the community, I think it's our desire to, to continue discussions with the, with the parks in the city about working together to potentially, you know, address the needs of the Park District, potentially, there's probably potentially an aspect of stormwater that could roll into this, as well as the longer-term capacity issues. I think my concern is, is that, you know, John, you're right. I mean, if, if you have 70 to 100 kids that show up at Field School, I don't know where we put them. And if we don't have any land to build a new Field School, on that's one option off the table. I, you know, we've kind of looked at capacity in other areas. But again, the, the community has invested in a certain capacity now to handle ongoing growth. So even if we had excess capacity today and we filled it up, that would just mean that the point in time where we would have to increase that capacity to later date would come sooner. And the community would have to, you know, have a discussion about how to do that. And, and so that's the kind of discussion I think we need to have. And I think that we talk about development. I think the city has, you know, the city and the parks, and we've, we've talked about, you know, this is our community, and we should talk about what the long-range plans are for that and what roles we each play in that, you know, at this point in time. And so I think it starts with the facts. And, you know, I think our desire is to engage in an ongoing conversation.
If I, before, Emily, before I take your question, if I could just throw out one clarifying comment. This impact fee is not recognized, the current $6,500 per-house impact fee is not recognized for the tear downs that you see going on in Elmhurst. This is, the impact fee is, is only assessed by the city and collected by the school district when it is a, I guess for lack of a better term, a greenfield site where there are no homes today. Sorry?
I believe it's a two-home subdivision.
Is that it? A two-home subdivision? Thank you.
We'll leave that in the ordinance.
So, so if you look, you know, Mr. Welton... So, so if you look, you know, Mr. Welton had, had given us the, the data for the last five years or so of the impact fees we've collected, and it adds up to not a whole lot, $6,500 one year, maybe three times that another year. You know, because most of the new construction you see at Elmhurst is single, single home tear downs. So, to Mr. Bloom's point, I mean, you kind of, the idea is you kind of put this money aside, and then hopefully it offsets some of your costs when it comes to putting in addition on a school here or there. The luxury we've had over the last few years is that because the tear downs are fairly well-distributed throughout the city, it's, has not overburdened any one school. The development of this magnitude would, you know, would be clearly far different. So, and then Emily had a question, and then Margaret.
Sorry, I'm hung up on the same two rows that we've been talking about, but why did you change the number of, I think it says students per home, but that's the average number of children per home, right? Not 205 students, but just children per home? The 1.76?
Right, because that'll get multiplied by the percentage of those kids that show up at our doorstep, which is the next line on that, the next row.
Right, but so, I mean, it seems like then you're taking that into account twice, that only a percentage are going to the 205 schools. Because the next row then is where you are talking about percentage in our schools, right?
Correct.
Percentage of homes with students in our schools.
With, yeah, with, with school-aged kids that go to our schools. So 77% times the 36.4% of the households in Elmhurst that have children in schools throughout the entire, and what we're saying is, in the column two and column three, that the, the average or median will not hold for this particular development, is, is less likely. It's, you're going to have potentially more kids per house. And, and again, it's not supposed to be predictive, it's supposed to say, what if?
Right.
What if instead of 1.76 we had two? Or what if we had 2.25 kids in each house? And what if more of those kids came to our schools? What would be the impact on us? Because we have to be prepared, because we don't, to John's point, I mean, if, if, I would love to know the answer to John's question, it would make this exercise a lot easier. But we don't know what grade they're going to come in. And so, or when. And so this is meant to, you know, really, what I try to, you know, when I do analyses, you try to establish the ends, and then you pick something in the middle to look at. And so this, really, I think, median, the likelihood of us, you know, having a subdivision like this go in that adheres to all of the median figures in this, in this district is probably the low-probability case. And at the other end of the spectrum, if you had, every house had 2.25 instead of 1.76 kids, and 100% of them came here, that was the, the other end of the case.
I just think the highest shouldn't maybe be 100%, but should be the 85% and 77%. Just if we're trying to stay a little more realistic, but I know.
Two highest numbers with each other. You're talking about two highest with each other.
Sure, but again, it may shave a few hundred thousand off of it. Okay, I mean, I get the logic.
Oh, yeah, all Chris has tried to do is bracket the problem, and, and the actual answer hopefully has an 80% chance or more of lying somewhere in the middle, somewhere between those two ends.
First off, I want to thank Chris's and the Finance Committee for putting together this analogy, this analysis. And I know you started off saying this wasn't intended to be an impact fee, but I, I feel like ultimately that's what we are trying to predict. And what I get from here is that, from this information that's laid out, is that 6,500, oh, first, let me back up. My understanding of the current impact fee includes only, it's only based on capital. It is not based on operating budget. So that's a correct statement. Okay, so if we go back up to that first part of your spreadsheet, where we talk about the impact on capacity and/or capital, the message that I am getting here is that 6,500 is not a sufficient number to cover the capital cost. So then I'm wondering what our next step would be? A recommendation to the, to the city, because I understand this is their ordinance, and we cannot affect the change of it, but we can make a recommendation on what that might be? And I'm wondering if that is the next step, and if so, when will we make that next step?
John?
I just want to clarify something. The city's subdivision ordinance seems to make the case that the impact fee is really a delay in the arrival of the new tax revenue, having to do with the fact that, you know, first the property has to be reassessed, and then it's levied, and the state collects property taxes a year in arrears, and that it can be maybe a couple of years before that new tax revenue hits the books. And it looks like that's the rationale in the city's subdivision ordinance, just to clarify. But it was my understanding that the real rationale for a subdivision impact fee was a capital need created by the arrival of new kids. And roughly, the new growth that arrives, albeit late, and albeit not meeting what the additional operating costs are, is supposed to try to meet some of the operating funds. So just, that's clarification. The city's ordinance really is based more on late arrival of the funds, not meet the capital impact. So, but I think all this is, is data that, you know, we'd like to send to the city and say, please consider an ordinance, or consider revisiting your old ordinance to reflect the, the actual impact of new development on the school system.
So, and, and I guess I, I wanted to be really clear, understanding, so the idea, the thought of the next step would be to send the city this analysis, this spreadsheet, which was very clear when Chris went through it and spent about 10, 15 minutes going through it. But we would send it to them cold, and they would then interpret what our, the impact fee should be, or would we make a recommendation on what we think it should be, is my question.
Yeah, it's, it's their ordinance. I, I think we can strike up a conversation with the city. I think we can share with them our spreadsheet, share with them where we've tried to bookend the realms of possibility, clarify what the, the intent of the impact fee is, and ultimately, it's a city ordinance. So let's give them the best information that we can, and have them discuss it.
And the best information is this spreadsheet?
Well, that's the best thing we have right now.
And so, and that, and that's what I'm saying. So that's the plan, is we're going to give them this spreadsheet, we, are we all, and we're going to try to have a conversation with them about this. And then from this spreadsheet, they will be able to interpret what, a suggestion on what the impact fee, if they choose to change it at all, would be.
Right.
That's our plan. Okay.
Anything else? Okay? Yes, Chris?
Just, just real quick to clarify, I mean, we talked about a discussion with the city, and I just want to make sure that we're all on board, you know, with a commitment to continue discussions. I, I think, given the impact that this has on us or could have on us, that, that is, it is important for us to have some forward vision in, in having discussions about this, and not, and not being remiss and, and kind of ignoring, and then having 100 kids show up one day on our doorstep. And, and so I think, and this board, I think, is really good at, at committing to continuing these conversations with the city and with the parks, as to maybe some ways, as, as we move on to development of this piece of land and the vision for what that ends up being, in conjunction with whoever wins the bid, or the hospital, and, and the various parties. Crafting a solution that works for all parts of our community, and I don't think we know what that is today. You know, there's all kinds of different ideas, but the only way we're going to figure that out is if we continue these discussions. But I think our interest is absolutely in having these discussions, unless I'm wrong. So please correct me if that's not the intent of the board.
Do, do we have consensus that we want to, through appropriate channels, have, you know, give this to the city and, and walk them through it, so that they, their understanding is the same as ours, and there's no misunderstanding of the spreadsheet?
Beyond that, opportunities to look at the development, and how we can partner with the city and the parks, and the hospital, and whoever the winning bidder is, to develop something that is in the best interest of all of us and our community that we represent.
So, could I say we have consensus of the board to enter into and continue discussions with the city and the parks over the use of this hospital land and possibilities for partial public uses of it?
Okay, but do, is there a committee going to do that, or who, who's in charge of doing that? How do you organize?
Well, we, we have the.
Through the president?
Well, we, we could do it through the president, the mayor, and the Park District president. And the three of us have met a couple of times in the last six months. We have the Park City School Committee, that this would be a most appropriate function for, since that committee already exists. I, I don't think we need to spend a lot of effort forming new committees for every subtask. So those would be my recommendations, at the, at the board president or mayoral level, and also through the City Park School Committee that exists today.
I just add one thing. So, and I think, Jim, you stepped in for me at a Park City Schools, you, you have, obviously, I mean, a hybrid approach of that, is you and John. From the standpoint that you guys have had discussions already, I know Shannon and I are handling stormwater. I'd just like to throw another option out, that would be, you know, potentially you and John can continue with your discussions, that, that you've been having, given your involvement with the president of the hospital, and the discussions you've been having with the other folks, and then John's involvement, and clearly the most expert in this type of thing, sitting on the board here. I would gladly bow out of that Park City Schools role to have somebody more intelligent than I step, step up and do it for me.
Who, who are you looking at?
We're thirty on it.
I'm looking at John, but I'm looking at you.
Yeah, good luck there.
I don't think we have someone there.
I, I mean, I, I, I think that's the way it's probably going to work out, and, and if that's all right with the board, we can continue to, to move forward.
I think it's important to have, you know, discussion about that, the, the two issues together, because they really are related. This discussion is about, you know, the, the schools and, and what the impact is on the schools from a residential development. But I think there's a, it's a different discussion about what's the vision for the way the three entities could work together and meet various needs that each have. There's a lot of value held by the different parties and different ways that could be explored in terms of exchanges, in terms of, you know, shifting resources, in terms of just real opportunities that I think already exist in what the parties already have. And I think that's a, a real important discussion as well. They're both important discussions.
I think there are several possibilities. There are, there are, as you alluded to, there are possibilities for swaps and exchanges that solve the city's challenge with floodwater mitigation, that may potentially solve our, our difficulty with, as our student population grows, the need for more, for more classroom space, especially as you look out decades ahead, and having some reserve capacity for that. And, and the park districts, you know, ever, you know, I mean, they're, they're in the open space business, and, and to make sure that they are serving the recreational needs of the community. And that, you know, for, for example, we, we partner with, with the Park District quite often, as, as the soccer games occur on Saturdays for our children. Parents use our parking lots in our schools, so their kids play soccer in the adjacent parks. That way the, the neighborhood does not, is not wall-to-wall cars all Saturday morning. I mean, it, it works out. We, we work together in that, in that respect, to make the, the entire town a better place. So, yeah, we want to explore as many of those possibilities, to look, look at the land that exists today, that, that's owned by all three entities, and see if there is, if we can elevate some of this property to, to a higher and better use than it's currently being used for by maybe swapping a little bit around. You know, those ideas are on the table with the Park City Schools Committee. We're currently talking about that. But the, the timeframe is short. The, the hospital, you know, as, as, has been reported in the paper, has solicited bids. It sounds like they have bids in hand. I'm sure they'd like to move forward. So whatever we need to, whatever we do, we need to do very quickly, to see if we can come to terms between the three governmental organizations, to, to see if, by moving a few things around, we can, we can come up with a, with a better plan for the community. So, you know, with your agreement that, that you allow us to move quickly, I, I think we can do so. Emily?
I'm going to say, I am in agreement, if you're asking about that, but as the field liaison, I do know that that community is also, you know, paying attention, and the whole town is, about what's going to happen with the bids that were put in on the hospital. So just, I know we're always asking this question, but, you know, how can we keep the community involved and make sure we hear from them? So I think it's good that we keep talking about it, that you keep us updated, so that we can also, you know, keep the public updated and find out what our constituents want.
And in your role as the liaison to field, I mean, you are also the information conduit as to what's going on, you know, between that joint effort to the, to the Field School community as well.
And I, I've talked to the principal and the PTA and a few of the individual parents, but I will keep doing that, and also try to give them some information as it becomes available.
Thank you. Anything else on this topic? Okay. That brings us to the approval of board meeting minutes for October 22nd and November 12th, 2013. Are there any changes to either of those two meetings' minutes? Anybody need more time, or I'm about to say I'm hearing none? And those minutes stand as submitted. The next thing is Committee Board reports. We have had four committees meet since, since our last regularly scheduled board meeting. So let me start out with the Policy Committee. John?
Unfortunately, I probably won't be able to give you much more than is written in the minutes. We, I know we've talked about it before, the changes in the, I'm sorry, we had the meeting on November. November 11th, I apologize, Veterans Day. We first talked about the review of the graduation policies, and I know we've talked about it here at the board table, about changing the graduation credits, the computer literacy credit being eliminated in conjunction with the additional science credits, and the total result having an increase of graduation credit requirement from 44.5 to 45.5 credits. And we, I believe, recommended two policies that would accomplish that, and are those on the agenda? They're not on the agenda for?
Yeah, they are on the agenda for first reading this evening, 100%.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay. We also discussed school signage. The, Dave shared with us the correspondence from the city and Redeemer Lutheran Church about a, and I guess an application for a sign that the church has requested from the city council. The committee believed, and our recommendation to this full board is that the school board not take a position on this. It's outside of our interest in the schools. It's something that the city and its jurisdiction should resolve. We had a wide discussion in the update succession section. We discussed the impact fee that we've discussed tonight. We discussed the impact fee that we've discussed tonight. We also discussed advertising, which had come up at various times in the Policy Committee and its predecessor Committee. And it was a very broad discussion about the things that might happen with advertising. Mr. Purnow suggested that it would be good to get a snapshot of the types of advertising that we're talking about, to put it into some form of categories to allow us to construct, discuss it constructively. And we will be discussing this again when that topic is, or I'm sorry, when those, when that list is assembled, and we've taken an initial shot at categorizing them, to determine what the standards would be in each of the categories. And we will report back when those discussions happen. We had a discussion about athletics, and we had written a policy on extracurricular activities a while back, and I brought up a concern that I was hearing from some parents about athletics, and how some of the participation requirements may not, or may conflict with some of the, the spring break. And it was a very good discussion. Dave was going to speak with the York Athletic Director about some of the rules, and, and bring back to the committee some of his findings, and, and we would talk about it then, and again, report back what, what we've discussed in another report. So, that's my rather halting summary of the proceedings, and if anyone has any questions.
Any questions for John? Okay, the Board Improvement Committee.
We had two agenda items. One was the PTA Board Community Forum, and we, most of the meeting was taken up going through the slides and preparing the slides for final presentation. So, that was our community forum in November. And then the other agenda item was our mid-year review in January, which Ellen has pulled the board. I don't know if we have a date yet.
I don't think so.
Okay, that hasn't come out yet. But it's going to be about mid-January. We talked about agenda items for that meeting. There's a list of six agenda items. So, one was talking about our mission and vision, and just really touching base with reviewing those two and determining, do we want, wanna keep, well, I guess the committee's consensus was, we would keep our mission and vision because it's being used in different areas in our district with our strategic plan. But one thing that we could do is come up with kind of a tagline, or a couple of words that show where we're headed, you know, kind of, it's priorities, maybe a priority, just in a few words, that the community can remember and get support around, because our mission and vision are just, you know, they're wordy, but they're, they're very good. So, that, that's one of our agenda items to discuss that. Two was talking about our district culture. Three was the Harris survey results. We want to get feedback from the brown bag lunches that we, are scheduled to finish by the end of December. And then four, community presentation. We want to continue our community engagement, talk about next steps for that. And this is a lot. So, next month, you know, we, we're going to have to refine this list. We've got one more Board Improvement Committee meeting coming up mid-December, so we will have to refine this. So, this was just a draft list with a lot of different items. But we talked about also committees, reviewing the top priorities for each committee, and what we want to accomplish in those committees. And then talk about our next board retreat, which is usually in June. And that, that was it. Thanks.
Any, any questions for Shannon? Hearing none? Let's talk about the-
I think there's one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Margaret, I should've looked up, shouldn't I have? Sorry about that.
Just a couple of questions about the topics that are proposed. Is there, I think we had somehow mentioned an, an additional topic, and I know we need to pare those down, but is there the opportunity to add more topics before we, we finalize that list? And what's the best way to get those ideas?
Just send them to me.
Send, email to Jim, anybody, email.
Okay.
We're, we're open to every idea. This is just what the committee came up with.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Performance Management Committee.
The Performance Management Committee met on November 14th, and the very first topic that we talked about was under the District Performance Indicators. And really, what we're doing is looking at it from a big-picture standpoint. As Shannon indicated, we've got this mission and vision that's, that's lofty, but that, that's what we're working toward. And so, what we really wanted to do is, is just to articulate, kind of, what's the roadmap, and how are we intentionally planning to improve, what's our bigger-picture plan, and intentionally, continuously improvement, right? What's that improvement plan? And it's around the DPIs, it's also around the Harris survey, and culture, and all those sorts of things. So, there's a lot of elements that are kind of, you know, that we're working on, but how does it coalesce? So, Dave, and how does it align throughout the organization? So, Dave shared with the committee on the goal-setting process that he's using at the build, for buildings and departments. So, I think that that's good, because it gets to, you know, all the schools, right? And it gets through that part of the organization as well as, so it's, you know, slicing it many different ways, and that's how we have to look at this organization. And it looks at the departments. So, that goal-setting process was very insightful from many different perspectives, for all of us as a board to understand kind of how it's happening at the organizational level, and maybe the hows, but, you know, we really were looking at, how do we meet the ends of continuous improvement, of DPIs, of rolling in Harris survey, and, you know, Rising Stars, and all the different plans that are out there? So, that was the intent there, from two perspectives. One is looking forward, and being intentional and purposeful, and at, you know, building levels and department levels, so that we're all in alignment, and, and looking toward the same end, if you will, to achieve our, our mission. And then also to look back to say, how did we progress? What do we need to tweak? You know, what are maybe potential best practices that we see that we can replicate? Those sorts of things. So, just so that you kind of have a flavor of what we're talking about. We also discussed adding for, potential topic for the mid-year review was the DPIs, and, you know, benchmarking, and revisiting some of our benchmarks. The second topic was attract, hire, retain, and develop our employees, because once again, we want, you know, what, what we do is educate, and it's through services, right? So, it's our people. So, we're always looking at, how, how do we look at, from a bigger picture again, not the how, because that's the district, but the kind of whats, and how do we link all these things? So, from a professional development, career pathing, succession planning, you know, how do we make sure that there is kind of a seamless transition when, you know, we have people moving, moving in and out and around in the district? And so, we had talked about, at the next meeting, having options, and kind of a planning process about, how can we begin to do those things in the district more intentionally? And lastly, our next meetings is February and May. So, that's what I had.
Any questions for Karen? Finance and Operations.
We can, just pretty quick, boiling this down, there's two main topics. One of them is, we brought up earlier, the demographer information. And one of the things that Chris had brought to us was, was looking at our, our demographer projections, and then I think what we'd asked Chris to do is look at the opportunity to link those to a longer-term facility planning exercise. I think Cusarda was, was just the demography piece, and then there are a couple of other firms that married with that, the, the longer-term facilities view. And what Chris had indicated, it was that he, he was in the process of putting an RFP together to, to solicit. And I, and I think we had talked about an emphasis on demography with an option on the long-term plan. It sounds like, given our discussions earlier in the board meeting, that, that there's probably an equal weight on the opportunity or the ability to roll that into a longer-term plan, particularly given the development. I think it's probably the biggest thing that's changed since we had our discussion, was, you know, looking at the impact that this development has on us, and, and planning from a people or kid enrollment perspective, to, but one of the items in that RFP has to answer John's question. So, the winner will have to tell us how many kids are gonna go to each school in our district. So, at any rate, Chris, just to, I, I think I just want to throw that out there, unless anybody on the board has any other input to that. The, the expense of this was, I think, $15,000 for the demographic study, and another 15, if we were to take it on to the next piece. I think our strategy was to go with the demographics first, take a look at what we have, and then, then roll it into that, which, that first 15 fell below the threshold, and I think Chris felt comfortable going out and soliciting, you know, RFPs. So, we will be, I think, pursuing that, particularly, with particular haste, given the conversations we just had. Any questions on that, or direction with Chris, or?
We won't know how much it is until we get the proposals, right? Isn't that what we're doing, RFP?
Right, there's a ballpark.
Okay.
Okay, and then the, the second material piece that we discussed, we've talked about impact fee calculation, we talked about PMA projections, which have already made it to the board table. The last piece was Frank just updated us on the 2014 plan. Well, I, we were, Frank's group works on a calendar year, so it's 14. This is the fiscal year 15 capital plan, which will be done the summer of 2014. So, this spending will end up in fiscal year 15. And it is $2.3 million. It's, it is in line with the 10-year plan that we talked about. And the only other point I would make is that 2.3 is, is just over the amount that we have in that fund. So, the assumption is that there'll be some, some transfer out of the operating funds to cover the balance of that. And then, as you can see, in the, in the projections, we have projected to fund the additional maintenance annually after that, out of, out of the operating fund, and then with, with some TIF revenue in it. But I think the big point is, is after, after doing this maintenance, the 2.3 million, we will have exhausted the balance in our capital fund. So, with that.
Any questions for Chris? Okay. Next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Consent Agenda. Just a quick run-through, there's the standard personnel and financial reports. There's the acceptance of school report cards, which I guess is a state function that we have to approve them. The approval of new and modified York High School courses that we talked about at our last board meeting. The approval of revised policy 6:300, it is the first reading of new graduation requirements. Approval of revised policy 6:320, a first reading of high school credit for proficiency. Revised policy 2:105, a second reading and adoption of the Illinois Ethics and Gift Ban Act. Revised policy 5:185, second reading and adoption of the family and medical leave policy. And finally, the revised policy 7:340, the second reading and adoption of student records. So, can I have a motion to approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda items A through I?
Does anyone want to remove?
Let's, anything anyone wants to remove? No? All right. Do I hear a motion? Emily.
I move that we adopt a Superintendent's Consent Agenda items A through I. I don't have to read them to you.
You do not. I already did.
I'll second.
All right. Move by Mrs. Bastido, seconded by Mr. McDonough. All right, Mrs. Walsh?
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. That's seven i's, no nays, that motion carries. Next on our agenda is upcoming meetings. Next Wednesday, December 4th, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee will meet in this room at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, December 10th, the Finance and Operations Committee will meet at 6:30 in this room. And Tuesday, December 17th, will be our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 in this room. We have one item coming out of closed session, and that's regarding a student discipline issue. I need a motion there, please.
Yes, and I'd make the motion that the Board of Education uphold the administrative recommendation of the suspension for student B.
I need a second to that motion. All right. Move by Dr. Harrell, seconded by Mrs. Ebner. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next is Board Communications. Any, any further communications?
I just wanted to add that we have the Board Improvement Committee meeting on December 16th. We just added that, so I thought we might announce it.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. One other, one other thing I want to throw in here is, at our PTA Council-sponsored forum, we had two things we had promised to talk about and did not have time to, was advertising in, in our schools, and, and the discussion of the use of, the potential uses for this former Bertow campus of the Elmhurst Hospital. On either one of those topics, should we go back to the PTA Council, and do we want to hold a discussion with the community about one or both of those topics? And should we go back to the PTA Council and ask them to help us get the word out, and set a date and a time to do so? That's something we should pursue, or no? Go ahead.
Well, I'm all for more discussions with the community, but I don't think, I mean, I think if people really cared about those things, they would've come up that night. I don't know if those are the two topics that would be on the agenda for our next community discussion, but maybe you guys disagree. I just didn't hear a lot of urgency to talk about, at least advertising. I feel like the other one came up a little bit. But if you guys feel like that's what people want to talk about.
Margaret?
I, I think that we probably should go back, and I think that was on the agenda, try to figure out what are the right topics. However, I don't think it's a fair assessment to determine if people really want to talk about advertising based off, the length of our presentation really didn't allow a lot of other topics to be discussed.
That was my point.
Yeah.
I think beyond the other two, there's more than-
There certainly might be more than two, that, and I think I was just writing a list of, as people were walking out the door, things that they were mentioning. So, that list, I think, certainly has grown, and I think it's a great idea to go back to the PTA forum and see, you know, let's have an open discussion with the community, and can they help us arrange that and set dates?
Emily?
I can't remember who I was talking to about this, but I think we could also hold our own community forum. I mean, I think that was a good launching pad, and I think that that was really nice of them to sponsor that, but in case they are a little too busy or not interested, I don't, I don't know if we necessarily need it to be sponsored by them, we could also have our own engagement.
Yeah, I, I use the phrase, "help us get the word out."
Oh, then yes, that's a great idea.
Shannon?
Right, I, I want to agree with what you're saying. It's, we're gonna have a series of community engagements, and, I mean, maybe it's time for the board to start doing this so regularly that we, we don't need the PTA Council for, for each of these community engagements, because it'll, it's going to be more frequent. So, it just might be more difficult to add in another, another group.
Really was looking to them to help us- Really was looking to them to help us get the word out.
But see, that entails a lot more, more than just getting the word out. It's, I mean, I don't know, it's hard to just say, "can you do this?", but it's, it kind of gets into a bigger project then.
John?
I'd voice my support for trying again the "meet the board" format that occurred before our meeting. I thought that was relatively successful. If we can ever see our way clear to not having a closed session immediately before this meeting, I, I think it's convenient. People show up for that, they show up for the meeting, and I think there's a lot of advantages to it. I think it's board improvement who talks about how to do that and just offer that.
Why don't we put it to the board improvement committee, who's going to meet in a couple of weeks to come up with a plan to have one of those? And, and I have to say, the, well, I, I think the idea of having it before a board meeting when we have no closed session would be ideal time-wise. Whether we're having a closed session or not is, is generally determined a week before our meeting, and that's just not nearly enough time to, to get the word out. So I, I think we should dispel the, the notion that, that we're going to do it before a board meeting. Yeah, because I, it's just, I mean, it's just impractical. Karen?
To that point, I know that the, the community, the community conversation said that they would like to, to meet with us more regularly. One thought was, can we do the "meet the board" three times a year? I mean, do you have any opinions as to what the window is as we talk about it in committee, as long as we're discussing it here with all seven of us? I mean, I know that, at least a couple...
Personally, I'd rather do it on a, on a as-needed basis, because I think if you start doing it three times a year and there's nothing to talk about, yeah. John?
You don't know about the need until you get there. I, I'd be inclined to set it up, and if nobody starts coming, then fix it. But, I mean, we had a room full of 60, 60, 60 people here who really came energized, wanting to talk, and I think we should just assume there's a, there's a need there.
I, I really give the PTA Council a lot of credit for getting that many people, getting the word out and getting a lot of people there, because they're a, they're a powerful organization when it comes to addressing people who care about what's going on in the schools. I, I think they have their finger on the pulse of, of those people, which is, which is why I would personally would seek their help in, in letting the community know when and where that meeting would be. Chris, did you have something?
Yeah, no, I was going to echo what you said, which I, I think that the, that the fullness of that room was in large part due to the work that the PTA Council did with us. And I think from a partnership standpoint, to fill a room, you're going to need a partnership with them. But I would like to ask that, can we just talk about engagement at our January mid-year? Just because, I mean, there are a lot of really good ideas that are floating around, but we have to make sure that we're effective and define what we're trying to get out of each one of these, you know, because we can add three, and then we can add two more here, and then we can add, I think we actually have a few nights a month where we're not doing something, so we might be able to put it on that one, too. So I just think we just have to be respectful of everybody's time. I don't, okay, sorry. So that, that's probably a good discussion for our retreat.
Shannon?
I just want to emphasize, because for two years I did the, I worked with the PTA Council on, on these events, and then Emily did it this year. So you two, if you want to work with the PTA Council, it's, it's a lot of hours and manpower, so I just want to put that out there. It's, if there's a lot of upfront work, and then Malia's involved with a lot of upfront work, so it's, if you want to work with them, it's hours and hours and hours for, for an event, and we, we've lived that, the three of us, if you want to add anything else to, to that, or you don't have to. But anyway, it's a lot of work, so we, we just need somebody that can put in that kind of time.
I will add that one of the things we did differently this year was that we marketed it through the chamber, through their e-blast. So we did have some people from the community here. Remember, we looked around, we said it wasn't the usual suspects? So I would never, ever ignore the power of the PTA, but we did use some additional tools, and I would recommend doing that again.
Thank you.
There's a lot more work. I mean, I'm very grateful for the PTA Council, they're a great group, it's just, there's a lot more work that goes into it, yeah.
Anything else on that topic? Anything else to board communications? There's nothing else on our agenda, so this meeting is adjourned.